Hi, everyone. We will be starting this hearing shortly to provide enough time for people to be able to join. And if there are any board members present, please let us know so that we can give you the opportunity to speak at the beginning. Additionally, while we're waiting for this presentation to start, please make sure that your Zoom name is your is your name so that we can keep track of it during the comments section. And we want to make sure we get everyone's comments correctly, written down correctly. Hi, everyone, and welcome to the Water Loss Performance Standards Board Hearing. My name is Betty Germa, and I will be giving the presentation today. Today, we'll be giving a brief overview of the regulatory components. And primarily, today is an opportunity for public comments, so that will be what we'll be spending most of the time on. And the public comment period ends tomorrow on February 11, 2022. And we will have the opportunity to answer clarifying questions for you. But this is more of an opportunity for you to just provide comments for the regulation. And we will be noting down all the comments as well. And Bethany Robinson is also here to answer any clarifying questions that you may have. For a more, a longer overview of the regulation, we had our workshop in January. So that information is posted on the Water Loss webpage, and you can go back and access a recording of that workshop if you want to learn more in depth. So the four regulatory components are as follows. The first is that suppliers must submit questionnaires on data quality, pressure management, and asset management, starting July 1, 2023. The second is that suppliers must comply with individual volumetric real loss standards. If assessed economically feasible, starting January 1, 2028, and continuing on a three-year basis. The third is that suppliers are to submit an apparent loss inventory if apparent losses are above their reported values in 2017 to 2020. And lastly, suppliers are to report breaks, repairs, and estimated water losses, starting January 1, 2025, with 2023 data. There are three components to the data quality questionnaires. The first are metering practices and data handling, which are to be submitted by January 1, 2023. The second questionnaire is on pressure management practices, which are to be submitted by July 1, 2023. And updated responses are to be submitted by July 1, 2026. And the third questionnaire is on asset management practices, which are to be submitted by July 1, 2024. And updated responses are to be submitted by July 1, 2027. Each urban retail water supplier will be required to comply with an individualized volumetric leakage standard by 2028 or by 2031 in some cases. Individualized volumetric leakage standards are calculated using our economic model, which is available on the Water Loss website. And this model used water loss audit data from 2017 to 2020 that was submitted to DWR. To calculate the standard, one outlier may be excluded, and an outlier is a real lost value that is negative or varies by more than 10 gallons per connection per day from the adjacent year's values. And if a supplier would like to request the removal of an outlier, they can email ORPP-WaterLossControl@WaterBoards.ca.gov. The first compliance period assessment will use only one of the following years, 2025, 2026, or 2027. For example, if you meet your standard in 2025, then you are in compliance for the first assessment. Continued compliance will be assessed on three-year cycles based on the average real loss of the preceding three years. An exceedance of five gallons per connection per day above the standard is allowed. Apparent losses refer to losses associated with inaccuracies in customer metering and billing, as well as theft. The apparent loss standard only triggers a reporting requirement, which will be an inventory of apparent losses. This means suppliers are not asked or required to maintain or reduce their apparent losses. The apparent loss standard is equal to the baseline, which is the average of the 2017 to 2020 reported apparent losses. If a real loss outlier is removed, the same year of apparent loss data will also be removed from the apparent loss baseline calculation. If apparent losses exceed the baseline for any compliance period, within a loud variation of five gallons per connection per day, suppliers must submit a detailed inventory of apparent losses to the state water board. Disadvantaged communities that meet the following criteria will first be assessed for compliance after submitting 2030 data. If their benefit-to-cost ratio until 2028 is less than two, or if their water loss standard is lower than their average baseline real loss by 25% or more. Suppliers may submit updated data for the economic model defaults. An updated guidance document is available on the Water Loss webpage. And suppliers have until July 1, 2023 to submit updated data. If suppliers would want to include that updated data in our next round of standards, we ask that you submit them by tomorrow, February 11. And the updated data should be submitted to ORPP-WaterLossControl@WaterBoards.ca.gov. All update data must be adequately supported by documentation. And changes to data after July 1, 2023 will need board approval and will be determined on a case-by-case basis. There are two alternative compliance pathways. The first compliance pathway is for low-loss suppliers, and this is also known as the off-ramp. The second is the alternative compliance pathway for other suppliers. The benefits of the off-ramp are as follows. No responses to questionnaires are required. The annual inventory of breaks, repairs, and estimated water losses are not required. And suppliers would not have to maintain a real loss standard below 16 gallons per connection per day or 1,184 gallons per mile, regardless of the standard. These are the following requirements that are to be met by January 1, 2023 to qualify for the off-ramp. The average baseline real loss is 16 gallons per connection per day or less. Variability is below 10 gallons per connection per day for real loss for 2017 to 2020 audits. If negative real loss was reported in the 2017 to 2020 audits, the cause has been identified and steps have been taken to correct it. Source water, imported water, and exported water are all completely metered. If source water, imported water, and/or exported water are greater than 5% of total water supplied, meters measuring at least 95% of volume are calibrated and tested annually. All customer accounts are metered, excluding fire flow, with at least 90% success rates in meter reading. A statistically significant sample of customer meters or 300 meters, whichever is lower, are tested annually. And if unbilled metered water volume is higher than 1% of total water supplied, the supplier reads the meters for accounts that are unbilled at the same or greater frequency as the supplier reads the meters for the majority of customers. The compliance pathway for other suppliers provides additional time to meet standard by 2031 instead of by 2028. And the requirements for this are as follows. Suppliers are to reduce the difference in real loss between baseline and standard by at least 30%, which will be reflected in 2025, 2026, or 2027 water loss audits. Data validity scores are at level three, or the supplier has demonstrated improving data validity scores. And two full leak detection surveys have been completed. Thank you for listening to our presentation, and thank you for your engagement and your time. If you have comments, please submit them in writing by email to commentletters@waterboards.ca.gov. And fax, mail, and hand-delivery options are also available in the notice of proposed rulemaking. If you would like to provide your comments orally during this hearing, after you're called on, please state your full name and the organization you represent, and also make sure that your full name is written in the Zoom. And if there are many commenters, you may be asked to keep your comments under three minutes. Additionally, if you've already provided a written comment or are planning on providing a written comment, you do not have to provide your comments orally as well. We accept one or the other. And with that, I am going to invite Chris to help look at raised hands and mute and unmute people for their comments.
Great. Hopefully, everyone knows about the raised hand feature. It's usually at the bottom of the Zoom under reactions, and there should be an option to raise your hand. And I will go in the order of raised hands. And then, so Fiona Sanchez, I'll ask you to unmute.
Hi, thank you. This is Fiona Sanchez with Aran Ranch Water District, and I just want to thank you for this opportunity. And also thank State Board and staff. We really appreciate all the efforts you've taken in developing the proposed standards and also working to address some of our concerns that we have. At this time, IRDBD would request two minor, but what we feel are really important modifications. And the first is modification of the off-ramp eligibility for suppliers who have their initial benefit cost ratio at less than one. And so then their standard would be adjusted and have an adjusted standard. And we're requesting that suppliers with those adjusted standards, who might be higher than 16, could also be eligible for the off-ramp if they're in compliance with that adjusted standard and they also meet the data quality criteria. And the reason is that, and as a supplier, if you have an adjusted ratio, adjusted standard, by definition, we can't really take any additional cost-effective actions. And we also can't cost-effectively get to 16 or below. So we would just request that Sections 980, Section 983, A, B, C, and D of the proposed regulation would clarify that suppliers with a BC ratio of one or less, if they have an adjusted standard, could be in compliance, be eligible for the off-ramp if they're in compliance with that adjusted standard and meet the data quality criteria. And then the second modification that we would request is simply that in that data quality criteria, that it be clarified that where it comes to source meter testing, that regardless of whether it's an import meter or a supplier's own source meter, that it could be tested and/or calibrated, since we can't always get into flow tests, and sometimes the location prevents us from being able to flow test, but we can certainly calibrate our meters. And with those two modifications, IRDBD would certainly support the proposed regulations. And I really do, again, want to thank staff for all the work and effort throughout this process. Thank you.
Great. And again, we'll go in the order of raised hands. If you, which will be Steve, Stephen, and then Andrea. Again, in order to raise your hand, look at for reactions at the bottom of Zoom and then click Raised Hands. You can also see the order of raised hands by clicking on Participants. So Stephen, and then Andrea.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, this is Stephen Poncelle. I'm with Truckee Donner Public Utility District. We're an electric and water utility serving publicly owned. The Truckee Donner will be submitting to the Water Board staff a request for modifications to the economic model. And we appreciate the work that staff has done to help utilities, you know, understand that model and figure out how to make it accurate for their utility. You know, and ours will be based on our low-avoided cost of water, being 100% groundwater agency with minimal treatment. And then the unique conditions of having an older, smaller water system, you know, high up in Sierra Nevada. We will, we are interested in financial and technical support for small or older water systems that need to make capital investments just to be able to understand water loss and address data validity and leak detection cycles, which is critical in terms of prioritizing investments. And then, you know, we'd like the revision, another revision to the proposed regulation regarding the ability to apply for a variance. The proposed regulation was revised to say level three data validity or improving, but it still has a firm requirement of two full leak detection cycles, which directly targets the small and older systems that likely need the most help. So we would like that that two full leak detection cycles also include a, you know, or making progress type caveat. And then finally, while we appreciate the three-year window, it seems like for some systems, that may not be enough, just pushing it out to 2031. So consideration of perhaps, you know, a further trigger, you know, for systems who can truly, you know, define a need and a plan that needs more time. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And now I'll have Andrea and then Joe. Apologies if I mispronounce your names. And Andrea, we know that we got an email that there are a couple other folks, possibly from similar group, that would like to comment. They seem to be in the order requested in the raised hands list. But so we'll just go according to the raised hands list for now. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for considering the order we'd like to speak in. Yeah, we raised our hands appropriately. My name is Andrea Abregel, and with the California Municipal Utilities Association. Our association is submitting comments tomorrow, along with the Association of California Water Agencies, California Water Association, and the California Nevada Section of American Water Works Association. The comments I'm offering today are reflected in our written letter, and others will be adding to my commentary. And my comments are made on behalf of CMUA and also on behalf of Chelsea Haynes from Aqua, as she had a conflict with today's meeting. We appreciate staff's ongoing work to understand our concerns, and we appreciate the changes made to the regulation over the past several years. We're offering some policy-focused recommendations to help make the regulations feasible for water suppliers. First, we request technical assistance and funding to be made available to enable water suppliers to comply with the regulations. We additionally urge the Water Board to offer technical assistance and additional time for compliance, especially for disadvantaged communities. Next, we request clarification in the regulation text on terms used to outline compliance requirements, such as full cycle of leak detection survey, reported leaks on laterals and service lines, annual reported leakage, and unreported real loss. We'd also like to request that the state water board look for opportunities to host trainings and provide ongoing guidance for suppliers on the process and data needed when submitting changes from the economic model defaults to supplier-specific inputs. Where water suppliers are coordinating with state water board staff and are receiving technical assistance, we are recommending that staff-approved adjustments be allowed through 2025. And we request that the Water Board incorporate some certainty for water suppliers that receive adjustment approval. And our specific request is so that there's language that we're requesting, and that's included in our written letter. We recommend that suppliers with the initial benefit cost ratio of less than one be eligible for the off-ramp and associated reporting exemptions, regardless of their adjusted numeric target, assuming that the suppliers also meet the existing data quality requirements. This is kind of following the comments made by Fiona Sanchez. We recommend the criteria for meter testing be modified to allow for meter testing and/or calibration. And then specifically for water suppliers that are regulated by the CPUC, and they're required to comply with General Order 103-A. We request that compliance with the regulation section, or sorry, we request that compliance with Section 4-6-A of that general order be considered as an alternative to the meter testing requirements in the proposed regulations. And lastly, we recommend that the inventory of all apparent losses and any calculations and data used to determine apparent losses required for suppliers that deviate from their baseline apparent loss levels and required registry submissions be limited to supplier-specific currently available data. Thank you very much for considering our comments today.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to Joe Berg and then David Boland. Joe Berg, are you able to unmute?
There we go. Good afternoon. Thank you. This is Joe Berg, Director of Water Use Efficiency for the Municipal Water District of Orange County. And boy, has this been a long haul. We've been at this now for years. And I think that we're on a good path right now compared to where we were at when we started. So I do want to thank state water board staff for letting us help develop this framework to where we've gotten it now. We are close. There's a few comments that I'd like to make. First, I do support the Aqua CMUA AWA comment letter. I think there's some really good recommendations in there. And kind of along that same line, MODOC recognized the heavy lift this was going to require by our retail water agencies throughout the county. So we started a technical assistance program back in 2015. That program has grown, and all agencies have accessed it. It actually has evolved to not only include the technical assistance, which is one-on-one support from a consultant's, but also shared services to actually get out in the field and do some of the field work necessary, such as leak detection and pressure surveys, meter accuracy testing, those kinds of things, so that they're easily accessible by our agencies. And that's a good example of the types of technical assistance that we could use from the state, even though we've gotten our own program up and running. I think it's an example of really what sorts of assistance other agencies throughout the state could use. The economic model customizations horizon of July 23, I think, is difficult because, as Ken mentioned earlier, agencies would have to undergo two full leak detection cycles. And for larger agencies, that may not even be possible. So what we'd like to see is that customizations can be made beyond 2023 and not necessarily require board approval. That seems to me like something that the board may not even want to be involved in when it's something that can be appropriately done by staff. We support Fiona's comments with regard to the off-ramp. And I'll conclude with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, David Boland, and then after that, Arnold Wong.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Dave Boland. I'm speaking on behalf of the California Water Association, which represents water utilities that are regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission, the CPUC. which represents water utilities that are regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission, the CPUC. CWA has been working with CMUA, Aqua, and Cal Nevada, AWA, on the joint letter that was mentioned by, by Andrea a little bit earlier. And that will be submitted tomorrow. And the points that I'm going to underscore are in that letter as well. I do want to, again, as, as already has been mentioned, appreciate staff's ongoing work to understand the concerns of the water utilities and to incorporate the changes that you have to help refine the proposed regulation. We think that there are additional refinements, as mentioned, and these comments are pretty inclusive to address some of those, those comments. But I'm, I'm just going to touch on four things that particularly affect CWA regulated utilities. And the first one was already mentioned by Andrea, which is that we think we need to add meter testing criteria that are aligned with existing CPUC requirements for meter testing by the regulated utilities. We'd like to see that as an alternative to, to provide for compliance with the off-ramp. And there's much more details in the comment letter on that one. Second, we'd like to ask for additional clarity regarding the calculation of water loss standards for multiple systems. Quite a few water suppliers operate multiple systems and they're geographically separate. And some of them, many of them don't share the same distribution system. We request that the proposed regulations be modified to clarify how the real water loss standards are calculated by adding definitions for multiple systems and small systems. And then in addition, a new section, which addresses volumetric, volumetric water loss performance standards that would allow these water loss or these multiple system suppliers to have their real water loss performance standard calculated by either including one, a water supplier's systems and one performance standard, which is calculated proportionately to the volume of the water served by the various systems. And two or two, having individual performance standards calculated for each individual system. And we think that the water supplier should be able to choose which of those two methods to use and to include or exclude the small systems that they have within their performance standard. A third question or first, third comment is that we recommend adding consolidation provisions. And we're concerned that the effect of the proposed regulations on consolidations would be to disincentivize it, especially for small systems that are struggling to, to achieve these standards. And we're particularly concerned that it will stymie regionalization opportunities. So we recommend that the regulations specify circumstances in which additional water systems might be brought into consolidation or regionalization by some method that includes a timeline, an updated water loss target for consolidated or regionalized water systems, and that would further consider the infrastructure condition and the maintenance history, as well as the water loss audit experience and other local conditions for the newly added systems. And then fourth and finally, we recommend a small systems exclusion or an exemption. We urge that the State Water Board clearly exempt all small systems that are below 3,000 acre feet or 3,000 connections or fewer, and that the regulation should be focused on the urban retailers where the return on investment for the water loss interventions is more cost-effective and will produce more substantial water savings. We believe that this will help keep water more affordable for those being served by the smaller systems. So I have more details in the comment letter and I'd be happy to answer the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Reynolds Wong, and then after that, Linda Higgins.
Good afternoon. My name is Reynolds Wong with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. LADWP would like to first extend our gratitude to the State Water Resource Control Board staff on the outreach and coordination effort that has been carried out thus far in support of developing the water loss performance standard called for in the Senate Bill SB 555. LADWP is one of the largest public water utilities in the state, serving roughly 4 million customers with approximately 740,000 connections and over 7,400 miles of main. We have been committed to implementing water loss reduction strategies since 2015 with the development of our water loss action plan, which focuses on data quality improvements and water loss reduction strategies. To improve data quality, we have developed an annual supply meter testing and calibration program. To reduce apparent losses, we have developed an annual customer meter replacement program that replaces over 30,000 meters and a meter testing program that tests over 1,000 customer meters annually. To reduce real losses, we have implemented a pipeline replacement program to improve infrastructure reliability and a leak identification and repair program to reduce leak response times. LADWP is appreciative of the State Water Resource Control Board's effort on water loss regulations and shares in its commitment of water use efficiency as environmental stewards. Moving forward, we would like to encourage additional stakeholder engagement on the newly added leak registry requirement. Upgrading LADWP's existing leak reporting system with the capabilities to consolidate and collect the necessary data to complete the report will take multiple years to pilot and implement. Additional stakeholder engagement with suppliers may provide insight on current practices and the status of leak databases, along with any implementation timelines. Additionally, we would like to request an extension on the registry submission to align with the final compliance of the regulation in 2028. LADWP is grateful for the state board's time today and we look forward to continued collaboration to increase water use efficiency statewide.
All right. Thank you. Now we'll have Linda Higgins, and then after that, Amy Talbot. Linda, are you able to unmute?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, board members and staff. I'll echo and the thank you and the efforts of the state board staff and working with us in developing these regulations and allowing us the opportunity to provide comments today. I'm Linda Higgins, Deputy Director of Customs Services of Placer County Water Agency. And our comments are related to consolidations, similar to Dave Boland's comments, but slightly different. And they're related to consolidations in relation to the proposed regulation. And PCWA will also be submitting a formal letter. PCWA is the largest water purveyor in Placer County, which was historically a mining community. So as small towns sprang up, so did numerous small water systems. And we've been a pioneer of consolidating small, struggling water systems and have partnered with the Water Board on several successful outcomes, which fulfills our board's mission to provide access to safe and reliable drinking water. We recognize and appreciate the Water Board's advocacy for consolidations to help improve the reliability and resiliency of smaller systems as that aligns with our stewardship responsibilities. Our concern is that the proposed regulations as currently written will disincentivize suppliers considering consolidation and regionalization. Smaller community water systems are not likely to have prior annual water loss audit data to assess current loss conditions or establish baseline water loss for the economic model. They also may have varying levels of capacity of both staff and funding. Some are managed by community volunteers, which, which means, means they might not be managed at all. So they, you know, they might not have information on meter replacement or meter testing or pressure management. They also are more likely to have high rates of loss, which may impact our compliance upon consolidation. It's also likely that they're struggling to keep up with increasing regulatory requirements and the high cost of replacing infrastructure, aging infrastructure. So we'd like to see the state build flexibility for compliance for water suppliers that operate multiple small water systems. The legislation currently requires a water supplier to comply by a single water loss standard for each individual water system, and we currently have seven. As we work with the state board on our regionalization efforts, it would help to assess our water loss compliance across our entire agency rather than by system. As it takes time to determine the infrastructure condition, review maintenance history, water loss audit efforts, if any, or other local conditions of the consolidated system. To me, it's like, it's sort of like buying a home, buying an older home. You get the disclosures, you get your inspections, but you really don't know the condition of the home until you live in it. So again, I'd like to thank the, the staff for, for working with us and giving us the opportunity to comment. And thank you for your consideration.
Linda, next up, we'll have Amy Talbot and then Sue Mosberg. Again, if you would like to comment, you can click reactions and click the raised hands. And the order of raised hands, you can see in the participants list. If you're on the phone and would like to comment, then you can press star nine and that will also raise your hand. So we unmute for Amy Talbot.
All right. Hi, can you hear me? Well, you can. Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. I am Amy Talbot with the Regional Water Authority. RWA is a joint powers authority representing 20 public and private water suppliers serving over 2 million residents in Sacramento, Placer, Eldorado, Yolo, and Sutter Counties. RWA's mission is to protect and enhance reliability, availability, affordability, and quality of water resources for our members. Our region is committed to cost-effective water loss control interventions. For example, over the last five years, the city of Sacramento has installed over 68,000 advanced metering infrastructure, otherwise known as AMI or smart customer meters, to help identify continuous customer leaks. And over the same five-year period, a recent survey of just four out of our 20 agencies showed a collective investment of over $240 million to identify and repair leaks and replace aging pipelines to improve reliability and reduce real losses and distribution and transmission infrastructure. We recognize the effort the State Water Board members and staff had made over the past several years in developing these water loss performance standards and the associated economic model. And we acknowledge the improvements incorporated in the currently proposed regulation text and model version and very much appreciate the opportunity to comment today. In addition to supporting all of the oral and soon-to-be-written recommendations and comments provided today by the Aqua CMUA, CWA, Cal Nevada, AWA Water Loss Coalition, spoken by with Andrea and Dave, RWA has the additional following comments. The first is a general comment on data quality and compliance flexibility. We're requesting the State Water Board to continue to acknowledge the inherent uncertain nature of water loss data and adopt an evolving mindset of compliance flexibility for suppliers throughout the water loss regulation timeframe as new information and lessons present themselves. We are just starting this journey on regulating water loss targets in the state, and there is much to be learned by both the state and the suppliers. The second comment focuses on the economic model. The State Water Board's economic model continues to have many of the same issues we've expressed in past comment letters. However, the state has recently embedded increased flexibility into the related regulation policies and guidance for those suppliers seeking to customize model inputs with supplier-specific data. These changes will indirectly mitigate some of the model's structural issues. Furthermore, we appreciate the State Water Board's decision to recalculate water loss targets with a goal of achieving a minimum benefit cost ratio of one or greater for all suppliers. The third comment is about model input customization and the process associated with it. Our suppliers would like to see a more formal process for managing and improving the customized model inputs to ensure the longevity of the improved changes. The rationale behind this request is that achieving water loss targets is a multi-year, sometimes multi-decade process because of the infrastructure-related planning, budgeting, and work required. An abrupt change to a supplier's input and/or related target will say due to an approval decision reversal or some other unforeseen circumstance, especially mid-compliance period, could render supplier unable to be in compliance with the regulation. Even though those circumstances hopefully would be unlikely, but I guess possible, we will submit some, some potential solutions for this in our written comment letter with more details for the State Water Board to consider. In closing, our region, our region's water suppliers are committed to cost-effective water loss control interventions as part of a supplier's essential function to provide clean, safe, affordable water to customers. A careful balance of all supplier priorities is necessary to continue to reliably provide water at a reasonable cost. Water loss requirements that overemphasize need to address water loss may redirect funding from other supplier priority areas like water quality. RWA would like to work with the State Water Board to ensure that the benefits from addressing water loss are being balanced with benefits the same investment we produce in other areas. And as with this mindset, we look forward to continuing to work with the State Water Board and the implementation of the water loss regulation and other related initiatives to address both climate resiliency and the human right to water. Our ultimate hope during this process in the future is that the water loss regulation that starts here become a model for other states in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Sue Mosberg, and then after that, Ryan Sanders.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm Sue Mosberg, I'm the Executive Director of the California Nevada Section of the American Waterworks Association. Cal Nevada AWA has been actively engaged in the water loss regulation development since the beginning of this back when SB 555 was promulgated in 2015. The American Waterworks Association has invested interest in ensuring the final regulation is both feasible and cost-effective as many of the regulations, economic model inputs and metrics are based on the context derived from the AWA Manual to Practice M36 Water Audits and Loss Control Programs, as well as the AWA Free Water Audit Software methodology. There are a few items that many on our coalition, that included the professional associations and our members that are impacted by water loss control have already stated. I don't want to replicate those, but to simply expand on a few of them, that the original intent of the water loss audit methodology was not to set performance standards, but rather to allow water systems to internally benchmark their water loss control activities and to work to improve those water loss metrics. And a scoring mechanism was associated with that so that they could over time see where their opportunities for water loss control were in a cost-effective manner. In that development, there were metrics and, and items that were specified for improvement areas. Many of those have now moved into the performance metrics that the state is developing. We ask that the Water Board understand, however, that the, the model is continuing to improve based on data that is being presented by the water systems. With each and every year of submission, additional information is known. In the early years, much of the information that was collected in California, AWA then actually took to improve the overall methodology as well as improvements and upgrades that are now seen in the latest version of the Water Loss Audit Software, Version Six. AWA recognizes and truly appreciates the partnership in both allowing flexibility in the audit economics, which then inform the economic model and in the flexibility of the economic model itself for water systems to dive into their data and customize some of those calculations in order to make achievable and realistic water loss targets. With this in mind, we do respectfully point out that water systems have many priorities that are imposed upon them, one of which is water loss control and the efficient use of water. However, I will point out that there are many water quality standards and environmental considerations that water systems also have to take into effect and into their considerations when they're planning their activities for both the current and future fiscal years. We request that the Water Board keep in mind this delicate balance of the priorities as the finalized regulations are developed. I also wanted to just point out and acknowledge that as County Nevada represents many urban retail water systems, so there are many other professional associations in our comments that you're hearing today and will be provided in writing tomorrow are not a reflection of our political interests or our um individual interests, but they rather represent the totality of of those who are both committed to meeting the regulatory require, excuse me, regulatory requirements as well as those in the consulting and manufacturing world that will help water agencies achieve those lofty goals. With that, I just wanted to say thank you for collectively um allowing this participation today and the open forum for comments. And it should be noted that there's a lot of interest and seeing that there's a hundred and six participants on the call today. And this is something that many water systems are actively involved in trying to achieve and help the state meet its overall water use efficiency targets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up we'll have Brian Sanders and then after that, Ellen Wyatt. We have two more commenters after that. If you're still interested in making a comment, please raise your hand using the zoom feature under reactions. And you can see the list of raised hands in the participants. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine. Right, thank you. Uh, Brian Sanders.
All right, thank you. Uh, yes, my name is Brian Sanders and I'm with the City of Sacramento Department of Utilities. Uh, we serve over a half a million residents within a hundred square mile service area. And we have been active partners throughout this entire regulatory development process. Uh, you know, we recognize the the massive amount of work that the coalitions and state water board staff have undertaken in the development of this of this uh regulation and we are appreciative for all the all the improvements that are made. Uh, we're in support of the more general comments being made today and submitted uh today and tomorrow by the Regional Water Authority, County Nevada AWWA, uh CMUA, CWA, and Aqua. Uh, and we will be submitting a more detailed uh written comment letter tomorrow. Uh, but at this time, I'd like to highlight uh just a couple of concerns and I'll I'll try to keep these as brief as I can. Uh, when it comes to the uh, you know, the annual registry of breaks, you know, the the city understands that the the key objective of SB five fifty-five is to reduce real water loss and uh nowhere have we been able to identify that the legislation or in the previous drafts of the regulation, was there a requirement for suppliers to submit an annual registry of these breaks for pairs and estimated losses? And so, you know, this additional reporting requirement would definitely increase the already high reporting burden that suppliers already carry. And so, uh, if the suppliers are going to be required to submit the this new registry, uh, we definitely feel that annually is too frequent. Uh, we would ask that suppliers be able to submit a summarized table of the data being sought as an appendix to their urban water management plans when they're updated every five years. Uh, the other point I'd like to hit on is uh just trying to identify a little clarity and certainty when it comes to the mandatory supplemental questionnaires. Uh, some of the data potentially being requested by the state board uh may not exist for some suppliers. So for instance, you know, the city of Sacramento is a single uh forty-five PSI pressure zone. And so, when you take a look at the uh, the the draft pressure management questionnaire that was released by the state board in December twenty twenty, uh, we actually can't answer it. So, um, if if there's gonna, i- if if the desire is to proceed with the mandatory supplemental questionnaires, uh, we would ask that um, these questions be actually identified ahead of time. And if a questionnaire is not applicable to a system, like for instance, the pressure management, uh, it would be great if there is a a waiver process built into the regulation. So, you know, I, these, I, we feel that the specific questions and the applicable waiver language, uh, if a questionnaire isn't applicable, uh, should be clearly identified and outlined in section nine eighty-three uh questionnaires and reporting requirements of the regulatory text. Uh, as written, the the regula- the regulation is just very vague. And so knowing the questions uh ahead of time will allow suppliers to collect the, to ensure that they're collecting the relevant data and budget appropriately for such things as additional staff and equipment, et cetera. Uh, so that that concludes my my oral comments for today. We, again, will be submitting a letter tomorrow. And I really do thank you and appreciate the opportunity to comment here today. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next up we'll have Alan Wyatt and after that, Casey LeBong.
Uh, hello, thank you, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to uh hear your views and others and um make some comments. I appreciate all the work that everyone on the call has been doing on this topic. My comment is partly a question and partly a, let's say, I don't understand kind of a comment. I'm involved in a lot of regulatory programs in different parts of the world and most of them have three- or five-year updates. And as I understand it, that is not in the cards. The standards that would be set, and I'm not exactly sure even when they would be set, would it be after July twenty twenty-three? Anyway, no change forever. It's kind of what I understand, which I think is very unrealistic. Uh, things change. I know there's an emergency clause, you know, kind of landslide and things like that that could allow changes, but um most any regulatory program involves updates. And it puzzles me that there are questionnaires about pressure management when that might seem to be a good thing to do if you were going to add pressure management as part of a computation of an updated economic model for an updated regulation. So there seems to be a big disconnect here other than the um questionnaires are there to pester the utilities because those who go on the off-ramp don't have to answer the questionnaires, whereas their responses to the questionnaires would be the most useful for others to know in improving their water loss. I mean, I I I just find some some very large disconnects here in in how this is going about. Wh- why wouldn't you want to update the the water loss standards in fifteen years or ten years? It just uh it makes no sense uh to me. That's my one comment. Um, you can respond if you want. Um, the other comment is that I and others have uh submitted already and are going to be submitting um comments which point to uh errors in the economic model and um both conceptual and mathematical. And um, I I would like for those, if they are accepted, well, first of all, responses be given to those uh uh points. Um, and that those responses be public and um define a timeframe if it changes to be made in the model as to when those will be accepted and used and how that will impact uh suppliers who've already submitted and gotten approval for a standard. You know, will you reduce standards if you change the model? I mean, what's going to happen after July or after February eleventh, when you pull in all the audits and then after July twenty twenty-three? Um, when, when is the ink, when is the ink going to be dry? You know, that's that, I guess that's a way of putting it. And how do potential errors, conceptual or otherwise, impact the inking, if you know what I mean? One last point, I would recommend that you consider in the um regulatory assessment that has the macroeconomic implications and assessment of alternatives. And I think Amy mentioned uh alternatives to that. Water loss reduction is not going to be economical in a lot of places. Um, and no effort was made to look at alternative investments nor impact in any significant way on rate pairs. Um, so I would encourage the um board to look at other alternatives. Uh, and they might have a better internal rate of return um uh and more water savings than um water loss, urban water loss reduction. I know SB five 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 just looked at the urban water loss reduction, but come on, we all know it's one water and how much water is wasted in agriculture, you know? I mean, hmm, twenty times more than is lost in in urban water systems, so. Um, consider expanding your point of view uh is uh my last comment. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next up will be Casey LeBong. And after that, will be the person that is on the phone with the three ones zero area code, so that it will be after Casey LeBong. And just to bring your attention to the Zoom chat, uh all comment letters will be available upon request. So I'll hand it over to Casey LeBong. Uh, let's see, asking to unmute. Great.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the state board's presentation today and for hosting today's meeting. My name's Casey LeBong and I'm uh commenting as a representative of the East Bay Municipal Utility District. And East, we also go by East Bay Mud. East Bay Mud is a an active participant in this process and we have been since twenty eighteen. We've enjoyed our collaboration with the State Water Resources Control Board and we've hosted Bruce Mackler at our utility as part of the development of the regulation in March of twenty nineteen. We've presented at multiple SB five 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 stakeholder meetings. And we participated in the economic pilot pilot of uh the pilot of the economic model. And my utility has three primary issues with the state board's proposals for SB five five five. They are uh, the proposed economic model is not ready for adoption. The draft regulatory text can be improved. And then third, given the financial implications of this regulation, East Bay Mud continues to urge the state board to have the economic model reviewed by third-party water loss experts. And so let me start with the first comment, which is the economic model is not ready for adoption. The the state board's economic model that's being considered for rulemaking now is um not ready for adoption because it contains significant errors that produce incorrect performance standards. Many of the errors result in lower performance standards that would require utilities to overspend on water loss control. And so do these modeling errors, the accuracy of the performance standards being proposed during the formal rulemaking is questionable. In addition, the state board's model deviates from widely accepted modeling methods such as AWWA, and the deviations have resulted in unrealistic performance standards for some utilities. And so specifically, the survey leak detection frequency is assumed in the state board's model. It should be calculated according to M thirty-six methodology. And also the state board has chosen to value the the loss of real losses uh at the higher value of the variable production costs or an artificial cost of water. And that our artificial cost of water is applied to eighty-six percent of the utilities that are affected by this regulation. Consequently, the uh, the the model that's being proposed for SB five 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 places a disproportionate responsibility on water loss control for the Northern California utilities. East Bay Mud's second concern is that the draft regulatory text can be improved and a few improvements um include the regulation excludes any revision to the model following its adoption. Um, there may be advancements in water loss modeling in the future, but California wouldn't be able to take advantage of those advancements under the current uh proposal. And in addition, the proposed regulation does not allow utilities to be reassessed for the eligibility, the low-loss compliance pathway during the compliance phase. So as utilities get better at water loss control, the proposed draft regulatory text doesn't allow those utilities to qualify. And then the last concern uh that East Bay Mud has with the proposed regulation is that the 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 financial significance of this regulation requires a rigorous third-party review of the state board's model by water loss experts. And the remaining errors that are be in the model that are being considered, that is being considered for um adoption show that the the state board's administered peer review was inadequate because of the remaining errors that we we are uh, we see today. So lastly, East Bay Mud looks forward to continuing our collaboration with the state board to develop accurate water loss regulation uh with achievable performance standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The final commenter is on the phone with area code three one zero. If you are on the phone, then you can unmute by a dialing star six. Oh, there you go. Uh, could you please uh state your name and if you represent any?
Hi, this is Ed Osan, spelled O-S-A-N-N. I'm with NRDC, the Natural Resources Defense Council. Can you hear me all right?
Uh, yes, we can. If you can speak just a little bit louder.
Okay. Um, thanks for the opportunity to uh to speak. Um, NRDC is a national nonprofit organization of environmental education and advocacy. But we support the adoption of a utility-specific standard for rear losses using the economic model uh for this rulemaking. Uh, provided that the integrity of the model is protected from spurious data being uh substituted for the default values that are initially populating the model. I think it's very important that the board uh provide uh public notice and opportunity for comment on all requests from water suppliers to adjust individual standards through data substitution under section nine eighty-four of the regulation. Uh, we also uh recommend that suppliers with a standard that is above their baseline losses, in other words, the low, low-loss um um jurisdictions should not be permitted to increase, to make submissions to increase their standard. I would invite gaming uh uh within the context of the uh uh water efficiency regulations that in in which the uh water loss performance standard is being nested. We actually believe the standard for real losses in the proposed regulation should be stronger. Uh, the board's regulatory analysis identified an option called alternative one that saves more water, provides greater net benefits over cost, and is highly cost-effective. Based on the staff analysis, alternative one would save four point six million acre feet over thirty years, nearly forty percent more water than the proposed rule. It would have greater net benefits and it would yield cost-effective savings at about two hundred dollars per acre foot of treated water saved. Uh, this would be a screaming bargain for most uh urban water suppliers in the state. And the board should not turn its back on cost-effective water savings of this magnitude. And we believe that alternative one should be in the final rule. We support the inclusion of a volumetric standard for apparent losses. Uh, the language of the proposed rule should be clarified and we'll make some suggestions for that in written comments tomorrow, but a standard for apparent losses uh really should remain in the final rule. Uh, we very much support the reporting requirements in section nine eighty-three for water suppliers uh regarding uh uh water metering and measurement, pressure management, and asset management. Each of these areas are potential opportunities for additional water loss reductions. And the data collected will help identify the most cost-effective opportunities for pursuing interventions, including potential revisions to the uh to the rule. Strongly support the requirement in section nine eighty-three D for water suppliers to begin in the reporting of all water main breaks and repairs. Um, uh, this will offer a wide-ranging analysis of failure rates, pipe materials, repair histories, and loss reduction uh practices. And this is a um foundational uh building block uh for um for further intervention strategies. The entire drinking water industry will benefit from a comprehensive and updated registry of water main breaks being available in the public domain. Uh, we do believe But we do believe that this reporting requirement should apply to all water suppliers, including those with low real losses that qualify under section nine eighty two. The loss management practices of these low loss utilities would be especially helpful to be part of this database. We also note that there is extra time, three years afforded to water suppliers serving disadvantaged communities for compliance with the real loss standard as laid out in nine eighty one G. And we think that's appropriate. However, not all systems serving DACs will qualify for an extension. And such systems should be prioritized by the board and DWR for financial support, including any new funding that's appropriated in response to the governor's recent request for seven hundred and fifty million dollars for drought fairness and related water infrastructure. And the SRF also be an ongoing source of support for such water systems.
Was that the end of your comments? I will assume so. And it seems like we have, oh, great, thank you. And it seems like we have another comment from Amy Talbot. So I'll give you the floor and ask you to unmute.
Hi again, I just wanted to respond to some of the previous comments. I just wanted to reiterate that the way the the regulation that I set up now is based on the ability and kind of freedom of agencies to take the economic model and customize it to their own utility specific data. And I don't think there's anyone kind of better to assess what those supplier specific inputs should or could be rather than the suppliers themselves. This is part of the inherent nature of water loss with agencies filling out their audits every year and improving and understanding the intricacies of all of their systems. And so I just want to kind of maintain that the regulation as proposed is built on the ability for agencies to customize those model inputs and that adding on additional layers of process and additional no oversight and criticism could slow down the process of that. And that I think the way the state water board staff have been managing that with kind of the the one on one, working with staff, working with supplier staff, submitting letters, justifying the changes to those inputs, providing backup documentation has been working. So I'd like to see that process being maintained. I just wanted to reiterate that I I think what we're seeing so far, we have a handful of agencies that have requested inputs to the model and that have received approval. And I I do think that there's going to be more over the next year before that July first twenty twenty three deadline. And I'd like to make that yeah, standard and as easy of a process as possible. There is so much work that goes into providing that backup documentation. So just wanted to stay at that point. And again, thanks staff for their dedication to working with suppliers to allow for the customization of the model to make it even more appropriate for each supplier based on the information they have. And look forward to what comes next. Thank you.
Let me tell that. And it looks like there are no more raised hands. So with that, I will hand it back to Betty, who had started this meeting. Betty, are you there?
Yes, thanks, Chris. Thanks for facilitating as well. Thank you everyone for your engagement and your participation. And I want to give you a reminder that you can still submit written comments by tomorrow. And if you would like your standard to be updated with default parameter adjustments or exclusion of outlier years, please send that information to us as well by tomorrow. And you can send that to ORPP dash water loss control at waterboards.ca.gov. And if you want these slides from this presentation and or from the presentation in January, you can also email ORPP dash water loss control dot waterboards@waterboards.ca.gov.